And we ask that you give us the knowledge to do a good job for the city of Howe and make the right decision for our citizens. All these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
We ask you to look at your minutes, if you would, at the 12th meeting. We have a correction needs to be made on those minutes, if you would please. Down under old business, the first item under old business, this item was tabled and not approved. Would that be entertain a motion to approve the minutes? Some moves? Jerry moves?
I second.
Jerry second. All in favor, raise your hand. Four for, none against. Okay. How about the financial statements? Do you see any that need some attention in the financial?
Yeah, they need some attention.
This should be right behind the agenda, this month's agenda, but right behind it.
That's the play on council, I expect to make a decision later in the week.
No, those were...
Anything on the financial statement? I searched through this with the finance being called, and it looks to me like everything's going pretty much proceeding. They did a search in Dana, just here in Ashland Park, and she came to last state. Now, entertain a motion to approve? Jerry moves? James second, all in favor? Four for, none against. Okay. Y'all hang on to my shirt there, because we've got a lot of items tonight, and I'm gonna try to get on through them before we can go home. But if I miss one, skip over them, y'all probably understand. Public requests, is there anyone here that wants to address the council?
Mayor, I have a small item to address at the Department of Fire Department.
Okay. Go right ahead, this is the time for it.
Okay, I just want to let y'all know, to give y'all an idea of the scope of what our responses have been this past year. In the year 2000, we've had 201 calls for assistance throughout our district this year. We had 18 building fires, and of course, you know, a real aspect for a district, we caught 36 grass fires this summer. And aside from that, other miscellaneous calls, we also had 91 calls for medical assistance. So, these 200 calls is kind of a first for us. We've had more calls this year than we have in the past. I think the past, you know, calls rate's been averaging around 150 a year, so we're growing, and people need us a little more.
I thank you for that. We do appreciate you hiring the fire department, and I want you to know, in all the dealings that we've had with the other ambulance services to try to acquire new contracts, the people that we talked to and the people that we're working with now are very, very high on the first responses from our fire departments, and they'll look forward to working with you guys.
We look forward to it.
Any others? Okay.
I've got something about one of your agenda items, is it a wait till the end, or?
Wait till the agenda, if you would please. This is some things that are not on the agenda.
Okay.
Ms. Storm?
Mayor and council members, I would like to thank you for your kind words that you sent us, a letter to our employees. The ice storm was really a major undertaking for us. We had some people come up here and thought they'd only be here for about six or eight hours, and ended up staying for about six or eight days. And we really appreciate all the citizens and how they've worked with us throughout this massive undertaking to restore power. And we had about 1,000 employees and tree trimmers here, and I think they're just about got us back to normal. But we appreciate all the patience that all of y'all have had in working with us.
Thank you, and I would've cooked you some pecan brittle, but didn't have electricity. That was a low blow this morning.
That's all right, I kept riding with my diet.
You on one too?
My comment right here.
Yeah.
If you will, I'd like to put a word in with you about putting their tree trimming back in their budget. I think that would save a whole lot of the problem, that would save them a tremendous amount of money, I'm sure, see if you can get that back in the budget.
Well, some of it, we do have in the budget where we just trimmed, like up in pots for them, and you never know when that 40-foot tree's gonna fall in that 20-foot screen.
Would have just a lot of...
It would've helped some, I understand where you're coming from.
Any other public requests? You come on in. We got a seat reserved right up there for you. This is my friend, the auditor, he, we met for the first time, you know, this first time he did our audit. We just wanted to tell him he's welcome to that. I mean, we may not be so happy after we've been there, the council may not, they may be after us. Anyway, let's move on. Departmental reports, Roy, you have anything?
No.
Okay. Stephen?
I was gonna talk about well number three for a minute. I talked to Gene Sanford, he's got that fine piston running, there had been a blit in it, the ice storm. And what I've got him figured on is placing a generator out there, diesel fed, it's big enough to run the well pump, and both pumps that pump up to the overhead storage, in case, you know, something catastrophic happens again. We wouldn't run out of water, you know, we had no electricity, we'd still have water for fires, drinking, bathing, whatever we needed. I've got him, he's been kinda busy, I just got to talk to him once, but he's supposed to be working on some prices on that. And I'm sure y'all seen the tree chippers we've got. We've got 12-inch alone from ISI, the hell of a mechanical problem, it's up and going, they got fixed today. So, we should be back robbing, chopping, rolling tree limbs here, prickling, soon as we get through the meter.
I do want, on that same line, Stephen did mention, and I want to mention, is that the weather turns off pretty again, we're gonna be going, we're gonna be trimming, or shredding tree limbs on Saturday, to make up for that. We've got tree limbs all over town, it's got to be shredded, chipped, and we do have a disaster area acclaimed for this county, and I understand that all the overtime that is expended, that FEMA will reimburse 75% of it. So, I'd like to bring two men in on Saturday, Stephen's permission, and I think he will do it, and see if we can't... There are just so many things during the week that go on that you have to stop for. And I don't know if anybody we could hire, I've been looking for someone that maybe we could hire on a contract basis for a week or two to help us with these lamps, but have a family, so we probably could go overtime with it. Is that all you have, Stephen?
Yeah.
I think for the period, it's as low as it's just cheap.
Stephen, I guess I don't know what...
Trash picking.
What do you have?
The trash picking.
Trash picking.
It's a 12-inch, it's a good one. Okay. Any committee reports? If not, we will go into old business, we have none, moving to new business. We need to consider the contract with Morris Engineers, the professional engineering service for us. Sure project, I bet you have a makeup in there. Frank, give him yours. If all of y'all have enough, you can read your letter, you probably know what you want to do, so if anyone has a motion, either way, entertain it now. Motion into the contract. Jerry moves?
Okay.
Jerry second, all in favor? Four for, none against. I didn't have any discussion until we've been discussing that for three months. Consider an act upon contract authorizing project contract with the Howe Community Facilities Development Corporation. This is the money that we would like to embrace, to go into the new sewer line project every year to help with the burden of paying those bonds off. And Jerry is here now, Jerry, do you need to say anything on this one? I would like to say one thing. This comes under 4B sales tax. I would like to go on the record, whoever makes the motion, if you would please, that the city has determined that this project is vital and necessary to the continued development of new and expanded business enterprises within the city of Howe. Because I think it is.
Read that.
The city has determined that this project is vital and necessary to the continued development of new and expanded business enterprises within the city of Howe. We have to have a way to get our way to water out.
I'm with the statement that you just ran.
Authorizing project contract with the Howe Community Facilities Development Corporation, and Chairman of that group is here. David, it does pay the amount, sleep with your group. All right, we have a motion. Have a second, Jerry second. Any other discussion? It's not all in favor, raise your hand. That's four for, none against, okay? The next item, I think we'll be hearing that. Consider an act upon all matters incident and related to an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Howe, Texas, relating to bonds proposed to be issued and delivered by the GTUA approving the issuance thereof and the facilities to be constructed or acquired by the city.
Mayor, members of council, I'm here to discuss with you the, as the mayor just read, I'd like to pass out some information, if you'd like, Kevin, I'd like to have a guard, and we all just... Turn your attention, turn to the second page here, that's really what I'd like to, if you're aware of, it is the schedule for the service repayment. Shows security beginning in 2001 and extending through 2018. And it has the interest cost identified on an annual basis ranging from a low of 4.81% to a high of 6.11% on the long end. The effective interest cost for the entire bond issue is about 5.93%. This is the resolution which the Board of the Authority adopted yesterday. It is not effective until you say it's effective. And I'm here receiving to ask you to adopt an ordinance which would make it effective. And I'd like to go over that ordinance with you, point out one or two matters in here that call your attention. Of course, the Authority's been working with the city of Howe since early 80s, and we've done bond issues before. The resolution that I gave you is exactly the same as prior resolutions we adopted. And I marked that. The only difference in this ordinance is the, call your attention on the second page, that you have made certain pledges in here, that in addition to your system revenue, you are also depending on the revenues which you previously act upon here between the Howe Community Facility Development Corporation and the city. The Community Facility Development Corporation collects the 4B tax money. They have authorized a contract with you that will provide a certain amount of money each year. That 4B tax issue, you'd be given the city, you would use, according to that contract, then you would use that to help to retire these bonds, and that would reduce the amount of rates that would have to be, or maybe on the sewer users that take them away. That's really the only difference. The project, we're having some approval on down, previous bond resolutions. Project is identified, and there's an attachment there to it, A, 24-inch sewer line, beginning down near the ball fields on the west side of 25, and it follows, generally follows that creek line back to the 902. Operate the engineering, authorize the agreement between the Howe Facility Development Corporation. Bond resolution has been adopted, it's dependent on your actual, this ordinance. If you approve the ordinance, then we look forward with the issuance of bonds, sale of bonds, and closing approximately February 21st.
Y'all any questions for Jerry? Take a minute, read that resolution, while this is kicking in, I haven't seen it since now, I just now read it.
Any question you can, or you might get answered out here, that is, do we have enough Eastland right now? The way we're going to go in our latest line, if we go in town, it's going to be...
Well, Mr. Morris and Stephen and I walked that out three weeks or a month ago, before Christmas. Submitted the environmental assessment, other than it has to be made to the state. We looked at that as a long, and Morris is going to check existing... To answer your question in one word, we're not certain, we're not certain how wide that easement is on all those property owners down there. Maybe he has to go back and someplace and acquire additional easements. I haven't had a chance to talk to him about that since, in fact, I'm sure. He just went, as courtesy of Stephen and me, we had to turn in this environmental report, he went with us at the point. He had, I think, indicated that you wanted to do the work, but he hadn't signed a contract. So, I don't know that he's done any more work on it, but during that course of that investigation at the point, he indicated that maybe the places will retain additional. The intention is to try to parallel that existing old line as close as possible.
I'm trying to remember, Jerry, how much money Tim put into this engineering order, defense. But 4B, dangerous question, there are...
I think like 18,000 dollars.
I believe that's right. I think I have that budget down here somewhere, if you want to dig it out, I'm gonna try to do it tonight. 48,000. The bond attorney, 355, 370, administration, right away, 48,000.
48,000, no, that's...
I did, I did say it.
That's Tim's budget, what I have working on there. I have a warrant pending on there, that's broken out, the bond attorney is 7100 to 35, 7138, and 370, 750. These are all bond issuance costs. Here's the engineering survey, and right away, 20,000.
Okay, what's your pleasure? Can I answer four questions? Can we get a motion?
I'm in.
I have a motion.
Second.
Jerry second. All in favor? Four for.
Thank you, Mayor, I would count, you didn't hear the real ones, one thing you said.
I love that.
I'll check back in, please, Morris.
Okay, I guess we're ready now for...
Let's go, members of the council, I'm Tom Gregg, this is Chris Gaita, defending at the financial audit report right now. The city continues to be in strong financial condition. The books and records are kept in excellent manner, and want to compliment Dana for that. We've got no management letter this year, she's done very well, very well. We generally have a management letter, most of our audits, usually there's some item that's something that, you know, we think might be a need for improvement, but we found none this year. I want to point out a few things to you, that this, the A-plus report, is the unqualified and independent audit report, on page three, to show you how good your financial position is. Your cash has increased, your certificates of deposits have increased, your current assets have increased, that's all a good sign. And your total assets have increased. On the liability standpoint, your liabilities have gone down. And as a result, on page four, you see that your total fund equity, or your total net worth of the city for all funds, has increased about $200,000. And that's a good, healthy sign. When a city does that, it's a healthy environment. Can't always do that, but when you do, it's really good, healthy, and the city council, the committee for administration as well, for achieving that. On page five, these are the revenue expenditures. The total revenues remained about the same in governmental fund groups, and your expenditures actually went down. And as a result, your fund balance was improved from last year. And on page six, this is showing your budget, the general fund, and the community development board funds. This is the first year for the HCFD. There's a note to the financial statements on that. I call your attention to that, it's page 21, Howe Community Facility Development Corporation. This is your 4B money, talks a little bit about that. I point this out to you, because this is the first year in your audit report that you've had this, that's fell out of the audit report. Going back to page six, you were real close on your budget for your revenues. The expenditures were not quite as close, but you didn't spend this amount of money that you had budgeted. And that's part of the reason why you've got a stronger financial position this year. On page seven, this is the operation of your utility fund, as well as the college trust. Remained just about the same, except for the large grant income that you had in 99, that was $250,000. Revenues for the utility fund increase, that's on page eight. And comparison to budget, you actually spent less than you budgeted on a utility fund as well. I want to point out to you, the information on your debt service, it's going down, and it's looking very healthy. It's in the notes to the financial statements, on page 17, shows that your outstanding balances this year, and the principal amount is $715,000, and it continues to decrease as you pay off your debt service. Overall, you're a very healthy city. Not all of our cities that we audit are as healthy as the city of now, but you all are very, very healthy in your environment. Do you have any questions that you'd like to ask me or Chris, as we resolve the audit? I've got, I believe we've got some extra audit financial statements for you now. Do you have those?
Yes.
Just say it.
Is that it?
That's it, Mayor.
I want to take you, I want you to know, the climate is completely different between this year and last year, and we appreciate it so much.
Boy, I am so glad to hear that, I was, I wanted to hear.
I don't use a fuss, you know, I try to be real nice, nothing, he doesn't think he takes blame for it. Anyway, this year, we had a great time. We had a good dinner, too. Oh, yes.
Very much appreciate that. On my side, I would like to thank everyone who worked with me, undersawed it. Apologize for bothering you guys for three weeks or so, but that was necessary.
I quenched every time I came through that door to my office, because I just knew I was bothering you. I want, I guess it's my responsibility, you're not gonna get any compliments out of me, I think you're a state leader one, but I want to tell you, we appreciate the work that you did on it, not only you, but the other girl. And I can say that for Stephen, actually, he hasn't been along, we're longer than to take credit for it. But anyway, we do appreciate, we do appreciate you, these people, this young lady right here deserves most of the credit.
Absolutely, she does. Thank you very much.
Okay, you heard the audit, you want to approve it. 4B, you move? Jerry second, all in favor? Four for, none against. Okay, we'll move on. Consider requests for sewer service for Pioneer Valley subdivision and JWV. You want me to tell them about this, you want to tell them about it, will ya?
You're probably a better speaker than I am.
No, you come on up here.
You know.
I'll back you.
As all y'all know, I've been up here pestering before, and back again now, so... The sewer line out there, Med Redshaw, she's y'all's woman, she's my other... We discovered it, Dave and myself, and my other... As I told y'all the first time, it's been in there today, so... You can leave that a week. Anyhow, they had some concrete over sewer line out there. And the people that I have taken business from says they don't need it, and I think that y'all can talk to you, but the mayor may be, on that, they've probably got more work on it than I have. Anyhow, a whole lot of money for more concrete over sewer line. And y'all question Stephen about the mayor's cover?
I'll tell you what I know about it. On the subdivision flat, there was a section, a path, that was caused to have to be encased with concrete over the top of it. And I think if we're going to accept that later on, we don't want to have to beat through that concrete, but I went to two contractors. Stevenson, talked to Sean too, as well as John, we talked with the building manager, none of them recommended that be done. This is something that comes out of the big engineering burns out of Dallas, where they use metal pipe, not the PVC. They all said, you do not need this for PVC, so if that would make the load lighter for Wendy and Carrie, I think that's what we all did.
Okay. I don't want to be a little...
It's gonna be some 3...
It's going to be some three foot on the ground, the way out. What's your pleasure? Got any more questions?
Please do. I guess what we're doing, if you want us to kind of be online, and everybody knows where I live, or goes to be so far.
Someone need more? I'm waiting on Obie, I think.
But, so, we need to approve this, or what?
You need to approve the exception of the requirement, the requirement for concrete overlaid on the six inch sewer line. That's about it.
What do you know about the street?
No.
Across the street?
I want to get to a couple of that's behind it. Where he come up and see it.
No, it's down across the street. I don't think it's just in the subdivision, where it is. Supposed to be in concrete.
I don't know why. Nobody else knows why, but that's what we approved of the subdivision out when the first people came out to develop Pioneer Valley. Pioneer Valley? Yeah. Anyway.
You're laying it, huh? Sir. You're going to lay the line, your last sir?
Obie move.
I'll second.
Carry your second. All in favor? Four for, none against. Alright.
Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Will B.
Okay.
Alright, next item. Ford Park and Recreation Advisory Board members. Who's responsible is that? Obie?
We were real with Steve on the Pioneer Valley. You ought to keep your mouth.
Okay, have a look.
Red boy Steve out, and we've been talking about it.
Leonard Huston.
Leonard Huston, and we don't have any...
You want to put those two in the form of motion? We have a motion.
I'll second.
Carry your second. All in favor? Four for, huh? Okay, now we're going to... One, James Ross, on the planning and zoning commission. Y'all all know James Ross? Steve Carroll does.
Oh, they lived over here on that little... She was on the tour of.
Yeah.
Okay, I met her, didn't meet him.
He's a very swell fellow. Obie, you move? Obie move. James, that's all in favor. Four for, none against. Consider appointment and compensation of city prosecutor. We contacted Rossler, agreed to do this. Same rate of pay. I contacted the judge and talked to him. He's well pleased with it, so it's up to you all.
Okay, the name?
Ken Rossler.
He was the one that was filling in?
He's the one we brought in temporary.
I move.
Okay, I'm motion.
Somebody said cost. Was he two hundred?
Two hundred dollars per court, two hundred dollars a container, isn't it, a month? Y'all remember all this stuff? I can remember all this. He sent me the wire? No, it's special, I mean. Where is it? You know, have it in there, I don't know. It's going to have to be on the gym to prove it. Yeah, I'm pretty sure. Anyway, Obie, it's the same thing we were giving to the other prosecutor that we had. In fact, I'm mistaken, it was a hundred dollars.
Two hundred dollars a month.
Two hundred dollars per court.
Hundred dollars per hour of jury trial.
Y'all want him? Raise your hand and I'll put your name down. Obie, Obie move?
I'll move.
Carry your second. All in favor? Four for, none against. Consider appointment Kevin Green as reserve officer.
Yeah, so far we've been able to acquire two excellent reserve officers. They're putting in a lot of hours for us. Kevin Green is going to be another one just like it. We looked long and hard to get him. He was working for Southmaid. He's worked for Southmaid for about a year and a half. He graduated, oh, let's see, about early ninety-nine at the police academy. He worked for Walmart, but he wants to continue being a reserve. He worked full-time for Southmaid, but he decided to go back to work for Walmart. And, but he wanted a reserve for us. So he's going to be real good, and we're going to be reluctant to have him. One real quick note though. In nineteen ninety-nine, when I first came here, we applied for a federal grant for equipment. Obie knows about it. The first installment of equipment was in late nineteen ninety-nine, and it was an X-ray, portable X-ray machine that we received. I got a message yesterday in the mail that we've got, we'll get the second installment of equipment coming, and it's a $65,000 thermal imager. Built on squad cars, like you see the county has, sets on top of their squad cars. So we're getting that, and we're getting it in April. So, so I got it. Thank you.
Move? Obie move. Carry your second. All in favor of that? Four for, none against. Okay, senior nutrition center? Participation? I got a call the other day, and this is about the third time this has come up in the last triple years. I got a call the other day from Cass, from the senior nutrition agency. And there is just not enough participation in our center to merit the ongoing of the program. He says you're having them about four days. And you pay the help for all that, and I told him, well, that's not a decision that I want to make. It's a decision you're going to have to make. And he said, well, I want you to talk to your council. And I said, I have a plan on doing that. And let them know, if they do this, if they take this one out, the equipment will stay there in case if we never get enough to go back again, restart it, that could be done. But he's going, I think Van Alstine is open three days a week. Am I right?
Sure.
I'll probably need to pay for it.
Three days a week.
Three days a week. They would maybe talk with them to extend that to five, and they would take care of the meals on wheels, to that problem. That's the people who are shutting. And that's about all I have to tell you. I'm not asking you to give any kind of approval or anything. I just want to know how you feel about it. Everyone, tell me how you feel, because I'm going to have to talk to the council about it.
Well, if we can't get anyone to come down there and eat, well...
It's not feasible, you know. It hasn't been that for a long time, to be true. But it's just gotten to the point so long that, you know, they got... It's a shame that the Palm Bean Center over there runs twenty-six people or so, and had to shut down because they didn't have a building for two months. And here we are sitting here with a beautiful place to cook and eat, and can't get people to come to eat.
The four days, it's like you said, that Cass, the meals on wheels, what, they did deliver?
I don't think so. I think there's four. I didn't inject that because that's a different situation. They get that every day. They depend on them every day. I mean, they're there. But the other was the people who come and sit down and eat. And he said the, you know, the contributions for the meal was just nearly nil. So they're going in a hole quite a bit every day by paying those people to go down and cook.
What are they going to do about six people with meals on wheels?
That's what I was just talking to them.
Come out of bounds?
He wants to run them out. If he does, he won't, they won't do it unless Van Alstine will pick that up. I can tell you that. We're not going to cut those people out that's homebound. I know one down there knows better, had to say that, you know, they've shorted money for food. And we said, we'll keep it operating until the government can get a little money, you know? But we can't let those people go. I'd just like to tell him, y'all, feelings. If you feel like, y'all, it would be okay with us if we're not making it, but we don't want to cut the meals on wheels off. Is that the way y'all all feel?
Yeah.
Well, okay.
Because some of those homebound, that's the only meal they receive.
And if y'all go home, Cass French, and talk to him, I'm sure he'd be glad to talk to anyone over here all. He's out at the old airport. Visited under Grayson County, no, not Grayson County Senior, yeah, the Grayson County Senior Nutrition Center.
Tri County.
Tri County, that's what it is. Cook, Grayson County. You did it right, Grayson. Okay, we need to talk about the repairs to the sidewalk in the one hundred block of South End on the east side. When Ray Houston was here, he had told me, he talked with the owner of the property about the city paying for the concrete. The owner said that they would pay, do the labor they perform and put the steel for the sidewalk west of the Huck's Catfish, because there was a sidewalk there and there's very few portions of it left. I mean, it's all been demolished and gone. Ray told me about that. And I mentioned to the council a couple of times because I didn't want it to become a conflict of interest. So I did it myself. And I said that I thought it was a good thing because people would need a sidewalk to walk on, coming from the church parking lot where the Hucks people have to go. But we've come into a situation where we needed, we didn't have an invoice on the amount of concrete. And as you can expect in the auditorium, we could not pay it without an invoice. I had Steve to go and major it off. Evidently, there's a misunderstanding between the building owners and the property owners about concrete and asphalt, because there was only about thirty foot of concrete. The rest of the place that used to be a sidewalk in prior years was covered with a driveway. So I need some help. They brought another invoice in for eight to three-quarter yards of concrete. But since there's a sense of controversy on the mouth of the board as whether it should have been a sidewalk or whether it should have been a driveway, I think we need some help. I told Dana not to pay it. Told Steve not to, until we got it straightened out. We couldn't pay it on the first letter because without a contract, we could have had a contract. But with that, we needed something to show the actual amount of concrete that was put into the sidewalk. So I need some help from y'all.
Let me, let me kind of, let me help you out a little bit here. I'm the one that went and talked to Ray Houston. And what we're talking about is three foot to one hundred and twenty-five foot of sidewalk. Ray said that, I asked him, the city would pay for the material if we poured the concrete. And he figured it on a scale that matters. He figured less than $500 and us. And we figured, I think at that time, it figured like seventy dollars a yard. So he said, yeah, go ahead. Well, the material, when you talk about material, you're talking about concrete. You're talking about steel, you know, it's in the concrete. Because the city requires you to put steel in the concrete. So when Ray left, then I talked to you, Mayor, down there at my office that day, and I told you that instead of pouring concrete across the driveway there, what I'd like to do is put asphalt in there because it break up the concrete. That's the way it's broke up, that's why it was broke up anyhow. And what I want to do is just charge the city just for the concrete, you know, just like we poured concrete all the way. And that's what I done. The invoice, and I told Steve that the invoice, and I gave him the wrong invoice. That invoice was for four and a wall up there. But anyways, it's the same price. And I did make a mistake on the concrete and wanted to take the $25 off. When we poured the concrete, we poured more than just the sidewalk. And you can figure the sidewalk, and Sam Higgins has got it figured in here at three foot. If you graded that out where it's as perfect as this right here. If you graded that where it'd be just perfectly smooth, where it's exactly three, four inches, exactly three foot, this is right. But you don't call up there, which figures out the four point six something yards of concrete. Well, you don't order four point six yards of concrete. You'd order four and a half or five. So we bought five yards of concrete.
Are you telling us you poured five yards of concrete in that little thirty foot sidewalk?
I'm telling you that when you buy it, you buy five yards. Now, I'm willing to do this. If y'all don't like that, and I'll tell you what you do. You just forget about the concrete. I'll give you the concrete. If you'll pay for the asphalt. Figure the asphalt. From the north end, it's twelve, it's twelve foot. From the back of the sidewalk, it's straight to record. According to your calculation, it's ninety-five foot long. It's fifteen foot on the south end. I'm willing to figure it at twelve by ninety-five. And you figure the square footage on that, and I got a dollar and thirty-five cents for square footage.
Obie, the problem with that is the sidewalk was on city property. It was our responsibility. We probably needed to do the sidewalk. And the reason I brought for the council, so that it won't you to have to be in a conflict of interest.
You're right. I didn't count the meters. I don't want the problem to work out. Where else could you go and get sidewalk to work today? You can't do it yourself.
It doesn't matter where else you can go. It's just a conflict of interest because you're only...
Mr. Mayor.
Did we?
Mr. Mayor.
I hear you. I'm talking to, I'll figure it out now, just a minute. Now, what's wrong with that?
Well, I don't know what the problem is, what I'm asking.
If we're, if the city's going to have to pay that, and there's a discussion between, and dispute between how much you want, you shouldn't be involved in the voting, okay?
We hadn't voted, don't we?
No.
I'm telling you what the, I'm telling you what we did. You don't pay the asphalt.
If we, if we pay for all that asphalt, what are we going to do when the bank wants asphalt their front?
I just asking you, I just asking you. All I asking for is pay the concrete, which is a reasonable price.
If we'd have paid the concrete a hundred and twenty-five foot, if it even could have been four inches thick.
Really? Hey, is this going to be such a controversy?
No, I didn't want some stuff to happen.
Just forget it, because I could afford, I could afford the $450. It's not going to break.
Was there an agreement to pay for the concrete for a hundred and twenty-five foot by three foot by four inches? Was there an agreement to pay for the concrete for a hundred and twenty-five foot by three foot by four inches?
That's my understanding.
We agreed, Mr. Houston agreed to pay for that?
Yes.
And what's, what's, what's the argument? If we agreed to pay for it, let's pay for a hundred and twenty-five by three by four inches.
Of concrete.
Of concrete.
It's not concrete. The status called all the thirty feet. That's what I'm saying. Okay.
Okay. I'm involved in this, and I don't have a conflict of interest in all this.
Right.
And I'm going to tell you exactly what happened. Just what he said. He went to Ray Houston, and he talked to him about doing that. The old sidewalk was busted up, cracked, pieces, everything. Ray told him, said, okay. He asked me, I was there. He asked me, said, how much will it cost? I said, well, just off the top of my head, it would be somewhere around five to six hundred dollars probably. But he comes back, and like Obie said, he figured it, and all, it was less than 500. Said, okay, do it. Material, not just concrete, material. That includes the steel and the concrete. Material, not just concrete, material, that includes the steel and the concrete. Okay, we got further along in the program and all. And I told O B, I said, "You know, we've got, we've got to run this sidewalk across here first. And then, we've got the asphalt to it, because that's the way you do it. And a freshly poured sidewalk, running the asphalt machine and a truck back and forth across it, you're gonna bust it, crack it again. So why don't we just asphalt from the building to the state highway? Lend it in with the highway and all, and see if that is okay that we do that. Where the east side of the sidewalk is the property line. So from there out is city property. He asked, he called Ray up there and talked to him over there, my boys' building and all about it, and he told him, "Okay." So we actually, we came back and we poured the asphalt, or poured the concrete, and then come in and poured the asphalt in between it. And the asphalt runs from the east side of the sidewalk, come out to the street. So there's fifteen feet by, well, it was about sixty-five feet long.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five feet long of asphalt that we just went ahead and poured in between the two pieces of concrete. No, we didn't, we didn't pour a hundred and twenty-five feet of concrete. We didn't pour four point six yards. But we replaced all of, in between the concrete with asphalt plus an additional fif- twelve to fifteen feet out to the state highway. To take, to take care of that. And the man right there said, "Okay."
Now, I didn't say, "Okay," nothing, that.
Yeah, you did.
O B said something to me about when he poured it up there, you was pouring the, you was pouring the driveway, and it sounded like a winner to me. You said four hundred, five hundred something dollars. I thought you were talking about your, your asphalt.
I told you that, I told you about not pouring the sidewalk in there, in the asphalt. And you said, "Well, let me go to council," and you didn't say anything wrong with it, which you never did.
I never went to the council, but I'd already gone to the council about one sidewalk. I mean, I talked to the council here a couple of times.
You never talked to this council about pouring sidewalks down there.
So we, we poured.
I, we go back and get the tape and all, playing for it.
We poured it.
I didn't.
We didn't talk about that down there, no, we talked about on the lower side of Hanging Street.
We talked about the west side of y'all's building over there, where the sidewalk was broken up and y'all was gonna replace it. I told the council, I said, "Ray has told them that he would do that, the city would do it." And I say, "We need to do it, because it'll be our advantage, it'll be the city's advantage, it'll be their advantage. Because there's gonna be people needing to walk and we don't need them to walk through the mud."
But we did not.
What I, what, what I'd like to have from the council, just tell us what they wanna do.
But we, we did not, we did not pour that ninety-five feet of concrete in there, three feet wide. But, in, in order to pour the asphalt and do it that way, keep from crossing the sidewalk and busting it again and all, we poured asphalt from the east side of that sidewalk out to the state right away, which measures twelve feet on one end and fifteen feet on the other end. And you figure that up for square foot, and, or square footage on that, and multiply it by a dollar and thirty-five cents a square foot, which is what the lowest bid price on the asphalt was. Plus, we also saved you some money in front of the store because you had an illegal ramp there. And Steve come up there one day and was talking about what they were gonna do to cut it out and replace it and all. And I asked him, I said, "Would it be all right if we just replaced it, covered it up with a planted box and took care of that problem for you?" And he gone hit check and see, and the next day he come back and said, "Okay, go ahead and do it." So there, there we've been out, we've been out the expense of all that additional asphalt and all to go from our property line to your street, plus what we done in front and all. And now he's not wanting to pay the four hundred and fifty dollars.
When we were first, originally, when y'all first talked about this, you were gonna actually replace the concrete for the sidewalk. And then you realized that we needed to put a parking lot there or whatever, blacktop. So I decided not to pour the rest of that concrete and just blacktop it.
Right.
For the driveway.
Right.
To the street.
Right. That, that's in addition, the three foot that we were gonna put concrete there, we went an additional for the, for the, uh, asphalt. We went all the way out to the street. Which is.
So instead of putting concrete there, y'all, y'all put the asphalt.
Can I, can I draw you a picture?
I need one.
Please, please.
Here you go.
Building, building sits here. Okay, the sidewalk we put, out here, down here in front of the park.
Okay, but, but originally, from here to here.
Originally, originally, it's a hundred and twenty-five feet, and that's why we talked to Ray Houston.
Right.
Okay, then, it's ninety-five feet from here to here. If we went ahead and poured that, and then we'd have to cross over that to get in the asphalt, this section here. And we're afraid with our green concrete car, if we wanna cross it with a truck and asphalt, it's gonna, everybody is busted again. It'll be busted again. So that's when he talked to Ray about just asphalt and from here, this side of the sidewalk, come out here to the street. And it measured twelve feet on this end, it measured fifteen feet on this end. So, this part here, we asphalted it also, and we, we don't stop, we was on concrete. But in addition to, to doing that, we also went ahead and done all this out.
But you're not asking for us to pay for this?
No, all we're asking you for is pay for the original price of what the.
Concrete would've cost.
Yeah.
Uh, Jimmy, let me ask you a question before you do that. For the sidewalk, the west side of the sidewalk, where the sidewalk lies, is that on city property or is that on y'all's?
Yes, that's on city. But the east side, the east side of the sidewalk, the east side of the sidewalk is the line.
Right. So you wouldn't have been going across the sidewalk to go out in the right way and pour anything anyway?
How do I get to the outside? You don't asphalt and then pour concrete up to it.
I know that.
You have to pour the concrete and then asphalt to it.
Right, I agree. But what you're saying is you came all the way on out into the street and that, that was not, y'all don't have to put anything there, that's right. You didn't have to pay all that.
We could afford the four hundred and, and city eighty dollars worth of concrete and then let you come in and put the asphalt out to the street.
I just wanna know what y'all would do with it. Y'all tell us something we're going.
Can a concerned citizen chime in?
Yeah, go ahead.
We're, as a business now, we're probably talking the second largest employer in the city of Houck. Hucks has probably done more to vitalize, revitalize our downtown. Uh, we're squabbling over a few hundred dollars when it sounds like a couple of guys acted maybe in what was in the best interest of the city and in them. Based on what they generated in sales tax alone in the few months Hucks has been open, we've probably covered what we're, what we're squabbling about, let's.
We're not, we're not squabbling.
Well, I mean.
We're not squabbling over that, we're not squabbling over the money we're saying, we're, what we're saying is this is city property.
Right.
There was an agreement made for a sidewalk. Everybody is tickled to death to see the business and I, I talked to the council at least one time, maybe twice, "We need to do this." We, we, now, you know, this would've been good, that's, but I felt like they poured their own drive up in the parking lot, you know? As the sidewalk, but that's needed here and there. But, what we're saying here is the fir-, is the first thing we got to pay it on was just a letter that says, "You owe me so, so much money." Dana could not pay that, went back and asked for an invoice, so we could take that off.
I brought it the next day.
I, I.
Steve asked for it and I brought it the next day.
I, I'd like to say something. First of all, before, I'm fixing to make a motion, but first of all, I do that. I think we need, as a council and Steve and whoever, before we do any more verbal agreements, I think we need to do away with that, first of all. Have contracts. If we're gonna say, "Yeah, we'll pay for the concrete, you'll do the labor," whatever, we need to have some.
Written down.
Written down, concrete, something.
I agree.
Okay.
But Ray Houston made an agreement.
Okay, I, I don't know, and we can't help that. I'm gonna make a motion that we honor the agreement that we pay for the cost of materials of four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, uh, for the sidewalk or whatever the agreement was, I don't know how to say that. But I make a motion that we pay for the cost of materials for the, uh, agreement of three feet by a hundred twenty-five feet, four inches.
And the concrete.
Concrete and material.
That was done to about three hundred something dollars this time.
And material.
And material.
And material, right.
I'm saying and material, because if that's what was agreed with, then I think that's what we need to do. If that's what the verbal.
That my understanding was that we pay for the concrete, they pay for the forming and the steel. That's, that's a, no, no, it's not worth arguing over that, we've gotta figure out a way to pay for it.
I changed it to four twenty-three. Not twenty-five dollars off that figure, change it to four twenty-three.
Off of what figure? This, this on this paper?
Four fifty-eight, and I figured it at seventy dollars a yard and it's sixty-five.
Okay.
Okay.
Minus twenty-five?
On this, is this right?
Four thirty-three? Four.
Is this the right invoice?
Four twenty-three.
The second invoice, is this the right invoice for the eight and three-quarter yard? Do you have one?
I don't have it, it's for five yards, because it's four dollars of concrete. That's, that's.
What, what we need to do is, is take something and subtract the difference and leave it four hundred or whatever dollars so she could pay it, the dollar.
You can do it all.
Okay.
Right, it's four thirty-three. If you take twenty-five dollars off, it's four thirty-three. Yeah, I'd like to change it.
You can use that invoice, Steve, make the same, make the same thing. See, it's figured at sixty-five dollars a yard, so it'd be the same, same.
All right, you make the motion, James, for something.
Yes, I make a motion that we pay the cost of materials um, for the sidewalk that was three feet, a hundred twenty-five feet by four inches. Which is four hundred and thirty-three dollars. That's my motion.
I second. Got a motion, got a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Two for, opposed, one for. Okay. I'm just glad to get that settled, because nobody, and, and you, nobody had anything against Hucks or anybody else, that wasn't it. That wasn't printable for the whole thing. All right. Consider request from Chairman of Park and Recreation Board regarding relocation policy, is that you, David?
Right. We were on a roll until that last one, yeah. Everybody's zipping along. Um, basically, what we are trying to do with the Park and Recreation Board, we have forty-five acres that we're gonna develop, that the city purchased. And what we, what the challenge of the layout of the park is, is that there's a creek and two bodies of water, ponds that are right in the middle of the property. And so, that's made it a little tricky for us to set up the ball fields that we wanna put out there. What we'd like to do, and we've discussed this with the committee, uh, Park and Rec Committee, we'd like to put a couple of ball fields. We'd like to put a football practice field for the pea wheat football. We'd like to put a couple soccer fields out there. Eventually, we'd like to have a walking track and possibly some other things as money is allowed. But anyhow, um, what we would like to do, and we talked to the s-, uh, school to get their permission, uh, where the girls' softball fields are, we would like to build two baseball fields backed up to the girls' softball fields. And the reason we'd like to do that, starting on city, on the school property and going into the park, is because it allows us enough area to have the length that we need for the baseball fields. And it's close to the other ball fields that are all existing there. There's electricity that would be available, there's water that we could have easy access to. Um, it's close to concession stands and washrooms. Um, down the road, if we would need more space, we could potentially put it further back on the back of the property. But, as far as the layout, the topography of the property, as far as we understand it, it dips down towards the east and it goes down in kind of a lower area where the drainage, we think, would be a problem. So anyhow, our proposal to the city is that, and to the school, we had to get permission from the school, the soccer organization, and now the city, is basically, we would like to put the two baseball fields for Little League right next to the girls' softball field, so everything would be close together, the parking would be, you know, easy access for one another. And everything would just be kind of in a close proximity. So, you know, the council got together, the Park and Recreation Council, we've discussed it about four or five times, it seemed to make sense. So that's what we would like to propose to the city. And, uh, I guess, you know, we need some feedback and whatever, see if you think that's feasible.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, you sure, man.
My name's Brad Thurman, I'm the president of the Soccer Association. Uh, I did talk with David about this, uh, I did not see a layout of the park until the, the paper this week. My concern is, right now, we've got six to seven soccer fields where we're at now, the, where he's proposing to put a baseball field. The new proposal gives us two. We have seventy-five to a hundred kids usually each season to play soccer. We, I don't see how we can quite make it with two fields. Is there more of a proposal to put more fields on further down or someplace else?
Okay, initially, you know, I talked to whoever was running it, and as far as just going out there, I saw two fields set up out there with goals. And so, we assume that that's all they needed to replace, you know.
As far as large fields, that's all we have, but we've got, I mean, when you're talking about four and five year olds, they play on like a twenty by thirty field.
Right.
Then you go up to the eight year olds, they play on like a forty by sixty, and then you go on up, so.
We could put as many fields as we need out there, it's just that it's easier to stack soccer fields in a row than it is to put baseball fields.
Right, right.
And the goal of, you know, using the school property was to try to take advantage of where the fields already existed, so we could use the facilities. And we feel like there's enough room out there, you put twenty soccer fields if you want to. But it was just, you know, a matter of how it, a baseball field's got a fan out, soccer field, you can stack them in a row if you want. But we didn't know how many they needed. When I talked to Randy, who was leading Soccer Association before you, he told me that they probably needed three. And so that's the latest information I've heard and it's, uh.
Like at this point, like, like I said, we've had six there now, and like on Tuesday and Thursday nights when they normally have practice, all six of them will be full.
You're not on the Park and Recreation Board, are you?
No.
We always try to get our commissioner, no, I hate that, I heard you the first time.
I can't, yes.
Do you, do you have a master plan for the whole layout of the park?
Well, we worked together with the city planner, I forget his name, he came by and taught, taught, and he kinda laid out the proposal. It's similar to the picture that was in the paper here.
For the whole park?
Well.
No, I'm talking about the whole thing.
We don't have, I mean, what we would like to do is eventually build the whole park, but initially, our funds are.
And what I, what I wanna see is a master plan for the whole thing from start to finish. We don't have to do it all right now, with layout this whole thing.
Who's Tom doing that?
My, my next question is, uh, you're saying that Park and Recreation is doing this?
Yeah, they, they are proposing the.
You're saying, uh, you're saying Park Recreation?
Right.
What did you do, what they do this?
Well, over about the last, well, we had about a meeting a month for about four or five months straight, and then we decided to quit meeting until something got happening, you know, with the city council.
When, when's the last meeting?
It was about four or five months ago, I can look it up here. I don't exactly.
Really, I ask you, is, uh, I've, I've talked to some of these Park and Recreation and, and they don't know anything about this, and they know nothing about an engineer. So I was kinda wondering where this is.
Okay, the last meeting that we had was at the park, July nineteenth. And we had.
Did y'all vote for a real deal?
Yes.
You got a copy of the meeting?
I can look it up here. What's the point, I'm not sure what the point is.
I, that was the last meeting I made, I, I mean, I'm on the committee, and, and I think what I perceive to be our last meeting, I had a family emergency, had to go check on my grandmother, and there's been a four or five month lull, and I'm reading. and there's been a four or five-month lull, and I'm reading in the How Enterprise, or the Texoma, sorry, Lana, uh, what, what we're proposing, and I'm kind of scratching my head going, well, have I been kicked off, or? In checking with some other members, we haven't had a meeting in five months, and I guess, I don't totally disagree with what we had discussed, I don't at all. Uh, and even as a rough sketch of what we thought we might initially try to shoot for, uh, maybe is what is in the paper, but, but what I'm reading in the paper doesn't necessarily coincide, I don't think, fully with what, at least as a member of the committee, I was aware of. I didn't know we had an engineer supposedly helping us lay it out. Uh, you know, may- maybe it was just me, I, I called a couple of folks and they seemed to be as, I guess, confused as I was. That's why I showed up, just so I could get back in the loop tonight, so.
Well, we had met, and we basically, last meeting we had, uh, was that meeting at the park, where we had a proposed meeting, and we didn't have a quorum the next month, so we didn't meet in August. I had made a suggestion that we not meet until the city acts upon some of the things that we've, you know, proposed, and we were just meeting month after month and never getting any input from the city council. So I said, until we find out something from the city council, we're just spinning our wheels meeting. So our last meeting basically was to look at the possibility of putting the baseball fields where we're proposing, and, uh, if that was feasible. And then Ray called me and told me that the city planner would be happy to get together with me and somebody from the school board to help us kind of lay out, you know, plans on a piece of paper and show us if it's feasible or not. So, you know, that's the last meeting I had.
So really, the Park Recreation hadn't been the ones that recommended this, because you didn't vote on it, did you?
Yes, we did when we were.
I voted on it.
They, they approved this.
Well, they approved to see if it would work and if the city would be in favor, and we knew we got to talk to the school board to get approval from them, talk to soccer fields and soccer organization and.
Well, they must, you know, rob the equal.
That's, that's, I mean, that's fairly.
Talking to him, and he didn't, he, he don't. Well, I understand it this way, Robbie Seagrove, now, tell him to play them. So I've kind of wondered. Well, I've kind of wondered about all this. My thing is, before we do anything, my thing is, is we need a master plan, if we got an engineer, then we need a master plan of everything. You don't have a swimming pool on there, you don't have nothing else on there. We need to lay out of the whole thing, and then we're just, then we need to decide where we're going to start, what we're going to work on first. Because we need to lay the whole thing. If you start building here and there, the next thing you know, you ain't got nothing but a big mess out there.
I agree with that.
Four or five acre mess.
What we did though, is we took the information from the survey from the city, the people that polled, you know, told us what they were wanting.
Number one, what?
What was number one? Swimming pool.
We don't leave that still there.
I know, well, okay, what was the swimming pool going to cost?
Doesn't make any difference, the thing is, that one of these days, we, we're, you know, that's what the people want, so we're representing the people, that's what they want. Then evidently, you know, you're going to have to put it on there, you're going to have to put a place on that park, park swimming pool.
Thought the pond would work for swimming pool, and just put a diving board.
But you, but you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, we, as a board.
But you don't have a master plan for the whole thing, and if you just start, it'd be just like start building a house, you know, and we're just going to build run here, one over there. You know, you can't do that, you got to have, you need a whole, a master plan for the whole thing.
What we did, we took the survey and said, okay, what's feasible, and what the people want, and what do we think we can do? And we prioritized the baseball fields as number one, soccer fields number two, and the football is number three. And from the information that we gathered, we felt like those are three things that we could feasibly do.
And, and Dave, too, the main driver on that was that the sale of the city, city, you know, as we, the property for the fields we have right now, under the guise of four or five months ago, the best knowledge we had that boom, once that gets sold, we suddenly, we're in a dire need to get our ball fields set up and going, because where else are we going to play if we sell the land?
But let me tell you, we, we don't have to build the ball fields right away, because we hadn't sold that land, and we don't have to sell it, you know, you've heard the man say, well, go, we're not in no financial trouble, so we're not, you know. But my thing is, if we need a master plan, we got an engineer, and if we've got a man that's, that's doing all that, and it's not, and he needs to lay the whole thing out. He can do that. And that's, that's like, if you want to go over a school property and they can move a waterway back there, if it can be moved, then a ball field can be put on us.
Can you get Park Recreation Board together?
Yeah, we can meet, but we are meeting five consecutive times, and we would never get any input back from the city as far as any recommendations we were making, so we felt like we were wasting our time.
I know, but I, I think as, as Alkin alluded to, you, you were, you were working on the preemptive two or three things.
I would agree.
I think what we heard from Mr. Powers and also from, uh, uh, Mr. Hyguit at, at the last meeting was that probably you ought to, while we've got this engineer working on the prob- project, maybe y'all ought to get together as a group and try to get every, the time we can get everybody there and, and take the map and, and look it over and see where you'd like to try to get the engineer to measure, to put everything at one time, the walking, the, you know, you can reserve a place for swimming, but I'd probably be too old swimming by the time we get one, but, you're going to have to, you're going to have to take care of the kids first. I mean, that's my opinion, that's what we've always done.
And you need a new secretary, because you resigned.
Which one?
Cherry, White.
Yep. We do have any secretary.
Okay, Anne.
Um, this water creek thing's in the middle of our park. You know, I've, I've had people say that we can do something with it, and I've had people telling me we can't do something with it. So I talked to Steve earlier, while we was watching trees burn, and, uh, I asked him if he could find out from EPA or Soil Conservationists, Corps of Engineers, whoever, find out, yes, we can move it, or no, we cannot move it, and get it in writing.
I can get it in writing, but we've been told you cannot move a creek.
Uh, well, okay, and why we can't move it? It's the reason, I mean, I want to see it.
Because of changing the flow of water.
Okay, well, if that's what they say.
I'll get that from the, to write.
Then we can, then we can say, okay, now we need to look at putting the ballpark somewhere else, football field, whatever.
You, you can't improve it, though. You can't move it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, I want to see something, that's what I'm saying, see, I'm getting feedback, some people saying you can do something with it, and then you get feedback, most people say, no, you can't do absolutely nothing to it.
See, we researched it with an engineer five or six months ago, to look at the topography, to tell us what could be done with it, if anything could be moved. We never got any response back from the city. So we feel like we've been spinning wheels, we've had a lot of good ideas come up, we've had a lot of good input, and we met five consecutive months talking about how can we use this, you know, property effectively, and we finally came up with our three top priorities, and we put them down on a piece of paper, and they said, okay, you need to talk to the city, you need to talk to the school, you need to talk to the city planner, which are three things that we've been doing over the last four or five months. So, you know, the fact that we haven't met is by design, because there was no reason to meet until we got some information back and, uh, find out where everybody was leaning. And we got green lights from the school, we got a green light from soccer, and, uh, it felt like it was a feasible plan.
I remember that last, last month, we were supposed to meet with Park Recreation, and that's, that's always tabled the first time. We asked for a meeting with Park Recreation, and then the city engineer, and nobody showed up, so we took it again.
Yeah, well, that was a ice room that night, and I thought the meeting was canceled, and so that's why I wasn't there. I had a hard time getting back from Sherman that night, so I assumed that the meeting.
You rode a bell home a hundred and twenty miles, didn't you?
I'd like to make a motion, or, I don't know if it's a motion or not, but I'd like to recommend that the board, Recreation Board, give us a full plan, a projection of where they'd like to, uh, place the, you know, what am I trying to say?
Full plan.
A master plan.
A master plan, thank you, of the park, uh, and where the facilities will be, uh, for us to study and look at. A full master plan.
Get the engineer, uh, hustle, get the engineer.
What do we do?
I would almost.
Do we need to make a party?
Exactly, I was going to say, let's have a working meeting, because.
I think they need to meet first.
To Dave's point, he's right, we did meet four or five months in a row, and we did begin to feel like we're spinning our wheels, because, okay, we can give a master plan, but up to that point, the only monies we knew we were going to have to work with were the proposed sale of the land. So we waited a while, thinking, well, that, it sounded like for a while that was going to be fairly imminent in selling. So that was a lot of our basis for our decisions, was our most immediate need will be ball fields. So maybe the council needs to give us some guidelines, too, to help us make some decisions of work under the guise that we are going to sell the property, or we are not, and, and, and help, maybe help us define some requirements.
I agree. I don't know if that was a motion, or if it even need to be a motion, or if it might have been a recommendation of that. I don't know.
I recommend if we just meet in a work session with Park and Recreation Board.
With the engineer, yeah.
The engineer, that would be good, we appreciate it.
I still, I, I've still got the back of my mind, they need, they need to prioritize everything and kind of look at the map and see where they'd like to put it.
Well, we've done that a number of times.
You haven't put all of it on there, okay, and that's what I'm getting at.
But it, it would seem like that's kind of, uh, not value-added labor, because un- until we really maybe fully understand the requirements, are we going to assume we're dealing with infinite budget? Well, that seems kind of silly. I mean, that's probably why we didn't put a swimming pool in, not to say that we wouldn't, but, you know, we, if, if the kids have to be taken care of first, and we're obviously going to be dealing with a finite amount of money, then, then maybe we need to have an open dialogue with the engineer and with the council to understand the requirements.
If the citizens of How approve the election to sell the property this weekend, you will have that money, plus you've already got seventy-five thousand dollars put with that.
Okay.
That's already gone through the channels and been approved, that's the money y'all have to work with. So that was the reason I was saying, maybe they need to meet first and, and get their eggs in the basket and see what they want to recommend and where they want to recommend putting it. And I, you know, we get popped up here to work with y'all, but, but somebody, he has, he works in the daytime, he'd probably come at night if, if y'all were going to have a meeting at night to help you lay that out.
Yeah, we would love to have that.
I think, I would just like to say.
The engineer, the engineer could, the engineer will be able to tell you what, you can do this and do that with that land over there, where you place it, you know, there's.
One more question, would, would the council have us not pursue a, a joint, a solution with the school board, the school land, school ballparks? I mean, that seems to be key in, in the decision we made based on the information we had a few months ago. But, but if you'd like to see a master plan, would that be a, another thing that we say, let's take that out of the equation, let's use our forty-five acres and come up with our own solution?
I can, I, I can tell you this, this council has all said they were not against a joint venture with, with Scooball or both of them did, or is a hundred percent, but, uh, that wasn't a problem. The problem was the way that the fields will be laid out, that's, that's what I'm saying, am I right?
I tell you, I, I feel that, I feel like that, if we can do it without putting on school property, I'd rather press to do that. Personally, I'm not opposed to having to go in and do it if that's, if that's the only way that it'll work. Because I want the kids to have field.
Sure.
But, but if we can draw it up, that's the reason I'm asking about this creek or whatever it is. You know, if there's some way that we can move it, or.
Divert it.
Change it, or fix it, or whatever, so we can get the fields on our property, I'd much rather do that. That's the way I feel. You know, I'm not concerned necessarily that we don't go in with this pool.
All right, y'all tell us something, do you want to meet with the park board or have them meet first? They haven't met in months, they need to sit down and look this thing over again, they need to talk about it.
Yeah, I think they can meet, too, and we can meet, then we can meet with them.
What you need is that you're there to draw you a master plan, right?
Yeah, I mean, he gave us, you know, basically the sketch that's in the newspaper, it's about what he drew up after our conversation, what our priorities were. And so, you know, we didn't tell him to put the swimming pool in there.
Well, he needs to lay the whole thing out, what future use, you know, what you.
Was that a motion or not?
You know, we're going to start with bases, or whatever, in five years, or ten years, we have this thing complete, this is what it's going to be like, this is where everything will be.
We need to answer Park Recreation tonight, need to tell them yes or no, or table it. And if you want to table it and have them meet, us meet with them later, or whatever, I think that's a good thing.
Okay, that's what I'm going to do.
This is an agenda item, we need to do something with it.
Okay, I make a motion, we table this, um, regarding relocation of the ball fields. First, I'll make that motion first, and then I'll come back and.
Okay, I'll be you second, okay. Got a motion second, all in favor? Okay, got four for and none against now. Uh.
Now I'd like to, to make a motion, or whatever we need to do, that we, that the city council meet with the Park and Recreation Board.
We're going to make a motion that, because I'm not part of it.
Okay.
Are you just going to work set, uh, work?
We got a work session next Thursday night, but we're going to be busy for a long time.
Yeah, but we can, but you can schedule a work session.
We like to schedule one every week, y'all, to, in fact, we need to be scheduling them every week, because which part behind that, we never would get yet. I'm, I'm, I'm not kidding, this lady's been coming up here and working every night here.
Do we need, do we need to set a date or not? Or just leave it the fact that we need to set a work session?
We got a work session next week, we'll make it next week, and y'all try to meet in the meantime, before then.
Before what time?
We're going to meet for a work session with ourselves, for, for something more, not more important, but just as important next week, and it's going to take a long time.
Right.
Why don't y'all, why don't y'all get your group together and meet, and kind of hash this thing over, and, and, and talk about getting, uh, with us, and we'll have a work session with y'all the next week. What's on the next week?
February first will be that Thursday.
Well, you make them, give them, you know, make them.
Monday.
So we'll have a joint meeting on February the first, approximately? And we need to meet before that.
Yeah, Thursday.
I found a meeting that if with the rest of the council, but, you know, we can't vote on that, this is something we'll determine after, after we get to the agenda. What day is the first?
February first is a month, first Thursday.
The first Thursday.
How, how about Tuesday?
How about being Tuesday?
We can meet Tuesday week. We're going to meet next Thursday, so the next Tuesday week, maybe.
Say next Thursday, is that this week, Thursday, or is that the?
We're going to meet next Thursday, next week, on Thursday.
Okay.
For our work session over all this, uh, uh, city limit boundary stuff, that's going to be a long.
Twenty-third, it'll be the thirtieth week to meet this week.
And they're going to meet between then, if they get enough people together. You need to emphasize to them, this is very important, they might have to miss a part of a basketball game to get, or something, to get them all together, or going somewhere, but, you know, we're going to have to get moving on this.
Well, we've been ready, we're waiting at.
Okay, this is the sixteenth. We have a work session for the twenty-fifth?
Right, right.
Okay.
We've got a candidate election.
We're going to take advantage of candidate selection while we're here, we're going to have a work session.
And then the thirtieth for the Park Recreation?
Next Tuesday night. All right, let's go on.
Two weeks, I think.
Yeah, not next Tuesday night.
Appreciate you.
David, thank you for coming and explaining y'all's part of this thing. Y'all said you need another Park and Recreation member?
Yes.
You got a prospect. You know, it's, I'm serious, we ought to have the commissioner of basketball, baseball, hardball. Most commissioners ought to be on this Park and Recreation Board somewhere.
In, in one of our meetings, we each took a name of, of the commissioner of a league and called and talked with them, spoke with them. And we also, I think, at, where we left off is that we were going to ask Dana if we gave them, gave their names to her, to let them know when we're going to have our meeting, so that they could show up and be a viable part.
I thought you said you was on the, on the board, you're on Park Recreation.
I'm on Park Recreation, Brad, he's not.
So there's, the park man back there is the one.
Let's make a motion.
Put it on the table.
If it's all right a little bit.
See, they're, they're controlling that, the way they get Park Recreation to set up, because they can. See, they're, they're controlling that, the way they get Park Recreation to set up, because they control-
Can you have someone that he wants to ask?
Tom, uh, Tom Davis.
Now, I think it's very important you get the information on there somewhere. So, if he's already committed, you guess you gotta go through this. Sorry about that. Play the next one.
Okay.
Okay. We got a resolution. We need to adopt. And this is the resolution to put a thousand dollars as our fortune end for fiscal year two thousand, two thousand one. This is the intermodal transportation planning for the Sherman Dennison Howe urbanized area. Uh, we do this every year, and we get things back in return, like having all these maps made, and things of that nature, and getting Young Street, all these other things. So, entertain a motion for it. Carrie Business will be second. All in favor? Four-four, none against. Okay. Now, we're in a public hearing. Ordinance number five twenty-four. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Howe, amending chapter ten, section four, the water meter deposit. Ordinance number five twenty-five. An ordinance, city council, the city, relating to bonds proposed to be issued and delivered by the GTUA, approving the issues thereof and the facilities to be constructed or acquired by such authority. Okay. Anyone wanna speak on the public hearing? Okay, uh, Dennis. Excuse me. Well, we, we got this up here. Alright, ordinance number five forty-four. We're gonna vote on these, because we just had a public hearing. Number five twenty-four, what's your pleasure? OB news, jury seconds. All in favor? Four-four, none against. Ordinance number five twenty-five. Jury moves. OB second. All in favor? Four-four, none against. Okay, thank you. Now, the next item on agenda, we'll get away from there in a deep separate clock. Consider application, uh, William Duckton College requesting to rezone this two-hundred foot, uh, twenty-two-hundred foot, uh, along this north Denny. And, uh, the, uh, where's the, where's the P and Z standing right now? P and Z met on this item last night. Uh, at the north Denny, two-hundred feet by, two, two-hundred feet by twenty-two-hundred feet. Okay. And the P and Z, uh, they denied this? Uh-
We're gonna get the, I thought we was gonna redo the ordinance, update the ordinance on this billboard.
Well, the ordinance ain't anything to do with this. Uh, we, we are, we're gonna have to update a lot of ordinance. Subdivision ordinance need to be updated where it ends at. That's one of the things I wanna put in the work session. Y'all had that for a month or so. But anyway, yeah, you're right, it'll be, we do need to, we got this.
We talked about it.
We can't bill them that quick. We turned it over to the attorneys.
Okay, why did they deny it? They say?
Okay, it's right here.
Same reason as before.
Application for rezoning the property. Uh, it's not down here. They just said, they just gave us a report that they denied it. There's one protest. Number one, the new Howe High School is at the north edge of the high school limits. Therefore, it's one of the first community structures visible to those driving south on seventy-five, with advertising on a billboard nature distracted from the positive image of the new facility. And, number two, the district will have no control over what will be advertised within viewing distance of high school students. Thus, high school students and staff will be captive viewers of such advertising, and this is probably how this is too. Anyway, uh, that is, that is, uh, their recommendation. Anybody have anything to say about that? Okay.
Hey, Dan. I'm Charles Cooper, and I was Larry Elmore. He's partner of mine. He's made application, well, actually, the property owner made application for the rezoning. And it seems, I wish I'd been here at the last city council maybe meeting, but I'm in the sign business. And it seems to me that the main concern here is content, is my understanding. And obviously, from the letter from the school, it is content. And we propose, number one, we don't advertise anything that's controversial. Mainly, it's local businesses. It's not tobacco, uh, sexually oriented businesses, alcohol, anything like that. We're a service basically to local businesses, the hotels, the convenience stores, whatever. But we are happy in any way that y'all would like to legally, I mean, restrict content. And by lease with the property owner, we already have restrictions to say we can't do the alcohol, the tobacco, the, which we don't do anyway, and it's a standard part of our lease agreement. Cause we just don't do that. And, uh, and as far as the letter from the high school, that's on highway five, that piece of property. And if the high school is concerned about it, um, we would certainly, uh, you know, respect their wishes and, and, uh, not propose to do a sign on highway five. We would request that, you know, this zoning be approved for interstate seventy-five, where most of our customers, you know, the local customers would be. And so, you know, as far as the high school's concerned, I understand, and, and, uh, we certainly respect, you know, their wishes. As far as the content, um, in whatever form you would like it, we will do it. Cause once again, it's, it's just, we're a service to local business, basically. And, uh, we try to help them get business to their business. And so, we see it, you know, we see it as a benefit to them.
Well, while we're still in public hearing, and y'all have any, you know, you wanna talk to them about any kind of restrictions or anything? I'm sorry, George, hold on.
Yes, I'd like to say that most of these signs are metallic, and we have them at the double-deck level. They're too high. And I think that we need to address whether or not they put up just a sign, it's a single-level sign, or whether there shouldn't be a restriction. I think there shouldn't be a restriction against these things that are double-decked, because once the double-deck ones are there, I think you're gonna find triple-deck ones. And anybody that's ever seen pictures of US one on the east coast of the United States, this looks terrible. If it is a service, if this advertising is truly a service to the businesses, I think they'd like to have it done in a pleasant manner that reflects the taste their business has. And also possibly there be, should be a limit as to how many you could have in a given mile. This would reduce the clutter. Uh, and also notice this gentleman mentioned the fact that this is interstate seventy-five. To my knowledge, it's not an interstate at the present time, but it possibly will be in the near future, and I think I've heard forty-five mention.
Traffic.
Perhaps, perhaps. Well, I don't think they base interstates on how much traffic. They're duly authorized by the Congress to be an interstate, not based on how much traffic. But perhaps we'll get some relief when it becomes a federal highway, or a part of the interstate system, because they'll abolish some of this stuff. But then, question is, who's gonna have to put up the cost of removal? But I think per, also, are these of a public nuisance? I think so, because they reflect the television signals. And so, you have ghosting on channel eight in some areas of this community, where they're never there until we add these double-level, uh, signs. So, if they were only a single level, they would be a great deal more pleasant from several aspects. Thank you.
Anyone else wanna speak on this? Bud?
I'll speak just briefly. Uh, the schools issue is, is recorded on the letter.
Yes.
Personally, I feel like you as a board need to, to make, take every action you can, protect what, what else called, the Howe corridor on seventy-five. Or the business is gonna come there sooner or later, and the sign is there. I don't think that the policies you have in effect right now, or have with the control, what they're gonna plan on putting in. Whether they have a deed restriction, or what you're gonna call it, restrictions, you'll have no legal basis to protect that, so. Unless you have policies in effect.
Can I address this gentleman? The type of sign, and I, and I've seen, I've seen the double stacked signs. We do not build those signs. We, we just personally don't. We build this, like you were talking about, the single, you know, well, not one on top of the other, it's just one. And so, if that, you know-
Well, I think if we had an ordinance, if you don't do that type of thing, it wouldn't impact you at all.
Well, and, and, and I agree with him, and, and that's not the type of sign that we built to begin with.
Anyone else wanna speak on it? He's not. Council, do you have any questions you wanna ask? Or you wanna speak in any way on this whole situation, we're in public hearing?
I think we need redo the ordinance, table this, and, and, uh, redo the ordinance on those signs.
Big type of this, right?
Okay. Somebody on the table, give me a motion. Like, OB news, or Carrie's there?
I'll say it.
All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, we got four-four, and none against.
Thank y'all.
So, we on the table ordinance number five twenty-four, and five twenty-five of, just the same. This is the application line. Oh, we have to go down. Oh, I was looking at these, George, you got them all gathered. Okay, now we're ready, we're ready to vote on, uh, number one, right? I don't know. I'm trying to find out. Do y'all wanna table both locations?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright. Somebody go back in a second. To table, to table the other.
Hold, hold. Can we vote on these separately?
Yeah, but-
Well, then, okay. I'd like-
This is the first one.
Can I make a motion on this first one?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion on the first one, on the north Denny, and that's the one by the high school, right? That we accept the P and Z's recommendation to deny it. Is that right? Am I saying that right?
Well, we just got this plan. We're gonna table it.
So, you're talking about, well, I, I, I asked you, can I, can I make a motion on just this first one? And then table the second?
Did y'all make a motion to table both of them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Table, yeah, we tabled, and then we'll come back and redo our billboard ordinance.
And then, then vote on it.
So, there won't be any action taken, dollars in, so they're all tabled, the motion they made to table, both of them.
You want this?
I'm wanting to, I'm, I don't, I don't care whether we redo the ordinance or not. I don't want billboard signs running down highway five, north Denny, by the high school.
You don't want to get out, keep it out.
Yeah, but I can, we can deny this one, and table the one on the other one, until we get a, an ordinance, right?
We've already tabled.
Tagged them.
Already tabled. We denied it.
It's not gonna make any difference that when you come back and bring it off the table. If you deny it, you deny it. No.
It might make a difference if they, somebody, we create an ordinance, that some of the people in the council feel like, we oughta go ahead and let them put it on highway five? You got a motion in a second, so we need to do something on the table, right?
We already voted on it. We tabled it.
Well, I was under, I was, I misunderstood.
Okay.
You, you, you came back and said, we're gonna look at these two down here. And I asked a question about whether or not we could vote on this one on north Denny, and you said, yeah, I asked if I could make a motion on this one on north Denny, and you said, yes. Then I made a motion to, to go with the recommendation and deny it on the P and Z.
Yeah, that's-
So, you're telling me I can't make a motion?
Let's go back. Take one tab. Yeah, we need, we need to come back out anyway.
Right, we need to come out.
We got, we got too many ordinances mixed up here together.
We got some out publicated, we'll vote on it.
Alright, let's just back it. Here we go. We ended public hearing. I thought I said we ended public hearing. I didn't. Well, I'm saying now, we ended public hearing, so the vote was illegal. Scratch it out. Alright, now, let's go back. The first one, consider application for the twelve-hundred by thirteen-hundred block of north Denny, from agriculture to C three. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion that we accept the P and Z's recommendation to deny the request to change.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? This is north Denny. Is there a second?
This is, this is to, you know, the P and Z's recommendation not to change the zoning, or-
Yeah.
The, not allowed.
Not allowed. And in that place, this is the first one, and, and, and then. Okay, we have a second to the motion. All in favor of the motion and the second? We've discussed it enough, I think, so we know what we're doing. All in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Okay, now we got that one by us. Number two, consider application for the fourteen-hundred foot alone, uh, the fourteen, fifteen-hundred block of North Collins Freeway, frontage, from agriculture to C three. That's the second track.
Where exactly is this second track?
Corner.
Is it from the pond road zone? Is that the second track?
It's around you out.
Corner on the west side, uh, property that they traded. Where's the White Smith property? Where's the White Smith place on the-
It's on the corner of the intersection.
Across the hall? This is across the hallway.
This is the corner.
On the west side.
The west side, okay. Alright, so this guy's, okay, make the glass mess, cross it over here.
Forty-something acres.
It's about a quarter and a half, okay.
Okay, I'm waiting.
Okay.
Make a motion, we table this.
I have a motion to table the seventy-five location. Do I have a second?
I want a second.
Carrie, a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Alright, that's four. Okay, well, we've done people. They just, they just helped the, uh, recommendations of planning the zoning, and denied the dentistry from their, with Scooball. They have tabled the second one, which is on highway seventy-five, on the west side of the road. Everybody understand all that now? Okay. Here we go. Is that all we got to do, Dennis? I can't believe it. We, we've been talking all night about, uh, we're getting here in the Park and Recreation Board, about having a, uh, work session. So, we've got to have a work session on our boundaries. There's already, there's already been disputes coming up between cities, the boundaries between them. And, uh, we need to sit down with our attorneys. I, I would say, OB right now, that's the most pressing ordinance that we need to, to work on. We talked about the week. There's two more that, that we need to work on. One of them is the subdivision ordinance. But, this one in particular, we need to get on it. We've got the property that people have been paying taxes on for years, and they come out and build on it. We got the property that people have been paying tax on for years, and they come out and build on it, and now they find out they're in the city limit. So, it is something that we need to work on. Have we forgotten anything? I apologize, y'all, for getting this messed up tonight, but I told you of all this stuff going on, I already keep a great head. Anyway, I think we've taken care of all of our business. And, uh, we will have this work session next Thursday, y'all are all in, that's the date, one of the recommendations. We'll canvass the votes and we'll stay another hour with attorney and, and look at some of our boundaries, we're gonna have to get these brought up today, okay? There's no other items on the agenda, so we're free to go home.
We got one question right here, it's either this, either this, 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 this wheelchair accessible? We don't, we don't have that, we don't have a rail.
What is that?
For the street.
There's one coming out of there. There's a ramp coming up out of there.
That's a ramp, look like a ramp to me.
It is, but it's not handicapped. It's too steep.
There's one right here beside the building. And the one over by, the one by the fire department there.